We call this meeting to order and welcome all our guests among us tonight. I know there's still some to come, but thank you all for coming this evening. We can ask our student trustee Jackson Brown to open the meeting with a prayer.
If you look in front of you, there are little prayer cards. But be focused on faith prayer, and if you'll follow along with me. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Jesus, friend and teacher. You ask us, who do you say that I am? Thank you for inviting us to know you more each day. Quiet our minds to hear your word. Open our hearts to love you more. For the more we know you, rightly we reflect you. You meet us in our every need, your love new each day. Guide us as we build your kingdom and find our home in you. For you are the Lord, the face of God, and the breath of the Holy Spirit, amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Jackson. I can now ask our vice chair in Tamasi for the motions adopted and information received in camera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. From HR and retirements, we have Eugenia Anton, Helena Corelli, Sheila Grant Borsock, Paul Leonard, Patricia Malloy, Mary Nystrom, and Gerard Scuta, retiring effective June 30th, 2016. We have Gino DeLuca has been appointed to the position of night school principal for the 2016-2017 school year, effective September 1st, 2016, with a renewable one-year term at the board's discretion. We also have Jody Rideout, Paul Cushing, and Lisa Reed appointed as department heads effective September 1st, 2016, for a period of up to four years. Special education, we have Wendy Reed Purcell appointed as special education coordinator, effective September 1st, 2016, for a period of up to three years with the possibility of a one-year extension. Anita Bader appointed as special education consultant, effecting September 1st, 2016, for a period of up to three years with the possibility of a one-year extension. And secondary vice principals, we have Sonya Ellison and Paula Ferguson appointed as secondary vice principals, effective September 1st, 2016. I believe that's all there is unless I've missed something. No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could have a motion to approve the agenda this evening? Trustee Rabenda, yes?
I have a notice of motion, please.
Yes.
For the board meeting of Tuesday, June 21st. Do you want me to read the whole motion right now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. Whereas the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association approved the First Nations Metis and Inuit Education Charter, and has encouraged every Catholic school board to adopt the same charter of commitment, and whereas the work of the National Truth and Reconciliation Committee Commission regarding residential schools in Canada has tabled 94 recommendations, including a number specifically focused on education. Whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board recognizes the history of our area with due respect and honor to its first peoples by acknowledging the land and territory, be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board instruct the Director of Education to prepare a comprehensive plan outlining the Halton Catholic District School Board's response to this call to justice through education.
Thank you, Trustee Rabenda. Trustee Treitz.
I would like to give a notice of motion at the next board meeting of Tuesday, June 21st. Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
Whereas in addition to any other duties under the Education Act, the Chair of the Board shall act as the spokesperson to the public on behalf of the Board. Whereas a member of the Board shall uphold the implementation of any Board resolution after it is passed by the Board. Whereas the duties of the Chair represents the Board and stands for fame must always state the will of the Board regardless of personal opinion and all appropriate venues. Whereas the will of the Board was definitively expressed at the May 17th, 2016, regular board meeting, defeated by a vote of 4-3, a motion to approve amendments to policy II, III, 39, Progressive Discipline and Safety in Schools Code of Conduct. Whereas through recent media statements in the time period of May 20th through to May 27th, 2016, made by the trustee Jane Michael, Chair of the Halton Catholic District School Board, did not uphold the will of the Board. Be it resolved that the Chair of the Board of the Halton Catholic District School Board is spokesperson to the public on behalf of the Board has failed to uphold the Board resolution after it is passed by the Board. Thank you.
No, thank you. A motion, sorry, Trust-
Madam Chair, I have a point of order. And that is, given the fact, it's somewhat related to that notice, but given the fact that there have been some statements to the media by the Board spokesperson, which tend because given the time is, and that's why I'm bringing this up, is a point of order because the meeting is scheduled, the last meeting of the year is scheduled for the 21st. So what I'm asking for is a ruling on whether or not it is in order to bring back the same policy twice to a Board because our bylaws state that Robert's Rules of Order is the standard parliamentary procedure manual that we adhere to. And Section 10 of the Rules of Order, generally, I mean, I can read it, but it says that no main motion is in order that presents substantially the same question as a motion that was finally disposed of earlier in the same session by being rejected or postponed indefinitely. What I would like to do is refer that question of whether or not the policy can be voted, the same policy can be voted on twice in the same session, I would like to have the Board's lawyer make an opinion on that. Specifically, I would like him to define what is meant by session in our context, and what is a substantial change.
I'm sorry, Trustee Morai? And I'm not clear on the twice in one session. This is the first-
Well, a session is not a meeting.
Right.
A session in our context could be, it could be when we elect a new Chair, or it could be when there's a municipal election. That would be how session, how I would expect session to be defined within our context of the school board.
Well, I don't think we need a legal opinion on that. We have a notice of motion coming.
I'm asking for you to rule on whether or not we can have a legal opinion about-
Right, and no, I don't think so. You asked for my ruling.
So then I would like to make a notice of motion, then.
Go ahead.
Whereas the HCDSB bylaws state our Robert's Rules of Order shall govern our meeting procedures, whereas recent amendments of the discipline policy approved by the, were not approved by the Board per a vote at a board meeting in May, whereas the Robert's Rules of Order states that in Section 10, no main motion, and what I said before, be it resolved that staff refer the question to our lawyer to get a legal interpretation on whether or not this would be in order, that is, to bring the same policy back to the Board again within the same session. So, and also for the lawyer to define what is a substantial change, and what is a session.
Trustee Morai.
This is not, this is not in order because by the time this, your notice of motion comes to the Board, it will already be that meeting where we may or may not, depending on the outcome of the policy, may be discussing that policy again. So, we're going to be, it's not your main.
Madam Chair, we're not to be debating the motion.
If it goes to policy, it will be, if it passes policy again, which it already has, and it'll be sent back to the Board for decision that evening.
Well, Madam Chair, again, we're not supposed to be debating the motion at this point. I could respond, but, and I could make a case, but we're not supposed to be debating my notice.
That's fine, we have your notice of motion. That's fine. So, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended with all of the notices. Trustee Rabenda? Seconded, Trustee Rowe? All in favor? So moved. Moving on, Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. Seeing none. Move on to the exciting part of our evening, presentations, and we'll start with 4.1, the Duke of Edinburgh Awards. Superintendent Nar?
Thank you very much through you, Madam Chair. I'm very pleased this evening to present the recipients of the Duke of Edinburgh Awards to you from Bishop Reading Catholic Secondary School in Milton, and with me tonight is Minister of Principal, Mr. Anthony Cordero, who is going to help us with the presentation. And I invite the Chair and our Director to come forward as well as we call up the students. Each year, we have a very passionate teacher, Judy Bridges, who helps to promote this award, and we have students who come forward. The program that the award is about is a self-development program that's available to all young people between the ages of 14 and 24, and it equips them with the skills to make a difference for themselves, their communities, and the world. It encourages personal discovery, growth, self-resilience, and perseverance in a non-competitive format. So, very pleased this afternoon to share the recipients of that award. I call forward our Director and our Chair, and Mr. Cordero. And I think the students are coming in.
Oh.
Glory, they're all here. Okay. Okay.
Where would you like them to be?
We'll call them in.
Quite a large contingency from VR. Strength in numbers. Okay, as a school principal, maybe if we can all make our way in. Okay. 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 Wow. Okay. So, at the school principal at Bishop Reading, I'm proud to present the names of the students who are Duke of Edinburgh Award winners. I would like you, when I call your name, if you can come forward and receive the award from our Chair of the Board of Trustees, Ms. Jane Michaels, and our Director, Ms. Paula Dawson. Once you receive that award, perhaps we can line up, if you don't mind staying there, just line up, and we'll take a group photo, or at least make yourselves presentable to everybody. So, but I want to thank the parents, and the grandparents, the siblings, and the extended family members for your tremendous support, being here tonight, Mrs. Bridges for all her fantastic work, but most importantly, for the years of support that you provide your children, the learning, the experience for them to continue to strive for excellence. So, ultimately, their success is your success. So, thank you very much, and congratulations to you all. So, I'm going to call the names. Madeline Delante. Great success in the north. Leah Diverstein.
And finally, on behalf of everyone here, I'd like to present to you Judy Bridges for
Thank you very much, for all of you for coming. Moving on to 4.2, Halton Catholic District School Board Bullying Prevention Awards. Superintendent Pennelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we would like the students to come in before I begin, so just wait a few minutes until they walk in. So, this evening, it's my pleasure again to present to the Board, as you're well aware, we've had a partnership with Halton Regional Police Services and the Halton District School Board since 2010, in terms of recognizing and spreading the message of bullying prevention and making respectful and inclusive, healthy schools. And as you're well aware, the give respect, get respect has been monumental in the Halton region, and we're very proud to be partners in that movement. This evening, I also want to recognize, and I think we should congratulate, our school, student trustees that join us, so Jackson, Chloe, and Manuela, who continue to take this initiative and work with the other school leaders in our, both our elementary and secondary panels, in ensuring that the enthusiasm and excitement is generated with the grade six all the way to grade 12. And so, thank you for all your efforts and your leadership in working with students and moving this initiative forward. So, this evening, we are also very proud that the initiative continues to build momentum. We have currently, this year, we've had an increase in the number of participation with the schools. So, we had 23 elementary schools participate, and we had eight secondary schools participate in this initiative, which brings us to a total of over 325 students that creatively worked on projects and in fact submitted. So, really a wonderful achievement in getting students involved in spreading the message to their peers. So, this evening, we're here because we're going to recognize the winners, and I'm going to introduce them in a few minutes, but I do want to say that, as always, it is the students that pick the winners. It isn't staff. And this is about student empowerment, student voice. So, they get to select, and in fact, we had 16 submissions at our gala that was held, and out of that, we picked, the students picked, the best original poster, which the winner, again, believe it or not, continuously, St. Ignatius Loyola Catholic Secondary School. I think that is year number four or five in a row that they have won. Best original song from St. Marguerite de Ville Catholic Elementary School, and best original video from St. Peter's Catholic Elementary School. So, these entries were then submitted to move forward into the regional gala, which was held on April 26th at the Galaxy Theater in Milton, where the, our other partners also submitted their entry, so students got to see the best of the best in our region. As you recall, and many of you will probably see in the community, the posters, the videos are in fact displayed in Halton regions. They will appear in various areas, such as the transit buses, as some of you have seen, they're on the side of the buses. They will appear in movie theaters. Last year, at the Drive-In Theater in Oakville, more than 50,000 individuals viewed the videos, student videos, before the movie began. So, that message is getting out there. It will, their, their works will appear in billboards, and also in convenience stores and other places throughout Halton region. So, this evening, again, I would like to, that you join me in acknowledging and celebrating the recipients, and we would like to call upon our Chair, Jane Michael, and Paula Dawson to come up. And this is the winning poster. As you can see, it is incredible, and the winner is Kashi Kososinski from St. Ignatius Loyola. If you could please come up, please. First place video, if we can see our first place video. And if we can have Jayden Pymacki and Abigail Murray from St. Peter's come up, please. So, the student in fact wrote the lyrics, and also the song, the music that goes with
of the students who are Duke of Edinburgh Award winners. I would like you, when I call your name, if you can come forward and receive the award from our Chair of the Board of Trustees, Ms. Jane Michaels, and our Director, Ms. Paula Dawson. Once you receive that award, perhaps we can line up, if you don't mind staying there, just line up, and we'll take a group photo, or at least make yourselves presentable to everybody. So, but I want to thank the parents, and the grandparents, the siblings, and the extended
The, I have the pleasure of acknowledging and celebrating parents in our community who have done some, some wonderful things. And as we know, our parents are key partners in making students' success happen in our schools. So, I, I have, again, the pleasure of acknowledging three of our CPIC members who were recognized with awards at the Ontario Association for Catholic Parents. First award, and what I'll ask, that our, our award recipients come up after I present all of our awards, so that they can get a picture together and get their awards. The first award, the Ontario Lifetime Membership Award, is presented to a parent who supports the aims and goals of OAPSI, and has contributed in a substantial way through their expertise, time, and effort over a period of years. This year's recipient was Josh Dubenstein, who is currently our CPIC Chair, and as many of you are aware, this is his last year with us as a parent in our, our school communities. He has served many years in many roles in our board, as a chair at two local schools, as our CPIC Chair and member at, at CPIC, was a founding member of our parent association group here, that really was the initial start of CPIC. To name a couple of main things that he has done for our board and for surrounding boards in Ontario, one particularly, the webinars that has gained notice here in our board to allow parents to be further engaged and being able to reach out to as many as they can, because we know how busy parents are, and to be able to, they want to be involved and part of their, their child's life. And Josh was a key aspect of, of getting those webinars going, and many school boards around our province has taken on some of those webinars as well, as well as being part of our initial parent conference as well. We certainly congratulate Josh and thank him for the years of service that he has provided to us here at Holton Catholic Jewish School Board. The next award from OAPSI is for the Gloria Nain Award, which is presented to an individual who has helped in a substantial way of fostering a better understanding of Catholic education in Ontario through use of various media forms. This year, Gail Merritt Mural, a parent of students at St. Mary's and St. John of Arc, and also a CPIC member, was a recipient of this award. Gail is a, has done and provided leadership in our Catholic faith to engage parents through the work of a Catholic group forum page, YouTube videos, and promotion of the Vatican app, to name just a few. We congratulate Gail on her award and thank her for the work she has done to engage parents. And the last OAPSI award is the Monsignor Harrigan Award, which is presented to a priest, deacon, or school chaplain who supports the aims and goals of OAPSI, and has substantially contributed to the Catholic school system. This evening, we congratulate Father Robert Haytou, pastor of St. Joseph, patron saint of Canada Parish in Acton. Unfortunately, he was not able to be with us this evening, but Father Haytou has supported Catholic education over the last 24 years through various roles. He was a Catholic School Board trustee, a school chaplain, and is current role as a dean or a rep on CPIC. Again, we congratulate Father Haytou, and for all his work that he has done and continues to do for us and our board. And lastly, but by no means least, I would like to acknowledge four individuals who were recognized at our last Council of Chairs meeting. CPIC introduced an annual award last year for Volunteer of the Year Award for parents, for their dedication that they give to our schools, and to be able to acknowledge and recognize all the work that they do. And we know that there are many, many parents who, and volunteers, who come to our schools to better make the community and the environment in which their students are in and their children are in better for them. And we wanted to be able to present that and acknowledge them, to allow opportunity to have people nominate them for their schools. Every school had the opportunity to nominate an individual, and one person from each of our municipalities was chosen. At this point in time, I'd like to congratulate the following four individuals. Sherry Booth from Notre Dame, Pamela Cootier from Mother Teresa, Janet Karsnada from St. Bridgette, and Vanessa Downs from St. Peters. I'd ask our chair and our director to come forward, so that we can present our awards. And after our awards, Josh would like to say a few words to, to, to the board. Josh Dubenstein.
For those who were here last night, it won't be that long. Chair Michael, Director Dawson, Trustees, Superintendents, and other guests, I just want to take a few minutes to thank the board for support I have received over the past decade or so, that I have spent my time volunteering for the students and parents of the Halton Catholic School Board. I didn't do it for fame or fortune, I didn't realize then it would become close to a full-time job, but I have received a lifetime of friendships, and the hope that I have helped parents navigate the education system, plus that there are students out there that have enjoyed their time at school a bit better because of my time. CPIC wasn't even a reality when I joined, it was a team of dedicated parents who got together and built up via parent conferences to webinars, to what it is now, a first-class organization, recognized across the province for its excellence. I've been extremely proud to have been part of it since the beginning, and thank you for its support, and ask that you keep supporting parents on CPIC that want to make the board a better place for all, for many years to come, no matter what the socioeconomic background, color of the skin, sexual orientation, or even faith. Over the past few weeks, the accolades I have received due to my volunteerism have been overwhelming. I never thought, putting my name forth for a school council 12 years ago, that it would all lead to this, but it has been a phenomenal experience, due to the phenomenal parents and staff, and board staff I was able to work with, and, of course, the support of my loving wife. I have a photo of my son, and when he was an infant, in a frame within a grave scene around it, a photo of him and I, which resonates with me for the past 18 years, and I would like to end my thanks and goodbye speech to you tonight, in the hope that we all do the same. A hundred years from now, it will not matter what my bank account was, the sort of house I lived in, or the kind of car I drove, but the world may be different, because I was important in the life of a child. Thank you, and may God bless you all.
Moving on to another exciting, 4.5, Math Action Plan. Superintendent Porcasen.
All the pressure to follow such a group, so, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to introduce this evening Angie Barden, who is our math consultant, and who will walk us through our math action plan for 2016, '17.
It's very hard to follow that up. There's a visual. So, you received a copy of our math action report, which is the second year of its implementation, and it's a component of the renewed math strategy of the Ministry of Education. So, the purpose of our plan is to introduce you to our mathematics action plan and communicate the board's commitment and supporting actions to ensure that all students can be successful in mathematics. It's based on seven foundational principles for improving mathematics. Our plan is comprehensive, it's broad in scope, and it reflects every single learner that's in our system. To give you just a very brief overview, we look at three layers of our plan. The first is our students and their families. Our second layer is our teachers, and our third is our system. To support our students and our families, our plan will include dedicated daily instruction, 60 minutes, by teachers that are up to date in the latest pedagogical research, instruction that is responsive to their needs and balanced to maximize learning, intervention supports to bridge learning gaps, especially in EQAO years, opportunities to problem solve, work collaboratively, and develop the skills to persevere and be resilient. We do that through a focus on growth mindset. Parent support includes parent information nights that include learning specifically in growth mindset, interaction with math problem solving. We have a dedicated math learning page that links to digital resources, including a webinar that I was able to produce last year. Our teacher support is what will focus our student learning. Teacher support includes dedicated support from our itinerants in areas such as lesson planning, knowledge building, curriculum connections, and assessment strategies, opportunities to participate in collaborative math learning communities in which student work is observed, moderated, and planned to foster rich engaging tasks and lessons, support from math consultants, and a dedicated math facilitator to support school improvement goals in numeracy, participation in research projects that are dedicated to understanding students' abilities, to set goals, self-assess in mathematics, cross-panel work, which has been very important to us for the last few years, in order to bridge the gaps between grade seven and 10, create a continuum of learning that prepares our students for high school, and then further transfer successful practices between both panels, and an opportunity to support our teachers. Our school and system leaders will participate in school-wide numeracy learning initiatives, support to participate in additional math qualification courses with staff, so principals participating in dedicated math AQ courses, opportunities to participate in collaborative inquiries in math within their own family of schools and with their partners, dedicated training and support from the math facilitator, regional networking sessions with other boards to share best practices, and opportunities to participate in research projects with the Ministry of Education to further our knowledge and understanding of sound pedagogy in math. Our balanced math approach that we use, and this is what will focus all of our learning for our students, our families, our teachers, and for our board personnel, is a four-tiered approach. Teachers teach through problem solving, we use three-part lessons, we use a problem-solving model in which students think, plan, do, and perhaps most importantly, reflect, rich tasks that invite discussion and invite 21st century learning, and we encourage the use of collaborative learning communities within classrooms. Purposeful practice, we look at what do students need to know to cement their learning, how do we take things from being memorized to conceptual understanding, how will I know that students will be able to apply strategies to new situations, and then how much homework should students be doing, and we dedicate time working with teachers to have an understanding and parents of that. We look at procedural knowledge of basic facts and operations, what knowledge is actually non-negotiable that they need to know that's mandatory, what does our curriculum document say? So, our curriculum document explains that students investigate, inquire, collaborate, thoughtful use of resources, so how are we planning resources in our classroom, what manipulators are using, what learning resources for teachers, what technology are we using?
There are any questions about the action plan or the presentation, we welcome them at this time.
Justicee Quinn.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Has the ministry given us any extra money in a specific funding envelope to implement their strategies that they announced in the last budget, or in the last announcement on curriculum for mathematics?
Yes, they have. They have provided a, a very specific guideline as to how the funds are to be deployed, and have allowed us to add on a dedicated math facilitator, as well as to offer us many opportunities for capacity building sessions, as well as resources and other, human resources, as well as other resources for us to use throughout, throughout the year. And they have been specific but broad. We have attended numerous end services, the senior administration, our director, as well as staff, and that has all helped us formulate the math action plan that is before you. So, we've incorporated the math strategy initiatives that they have shared with us, and we're ready to spend the money.
Follow-up.
Through you, Madam Chair. How will we measure the success of this very fulsome plan? How will we measure that?
I'll turn that over to you, Consultant Barden.
So, our measures of success are going to be first looking at school-wide data, so first using report card data, teacher diagnostics, teacher pre-testing, post-testing, moderation, whether we're achieving our SIPSA goals, then to meet our board goals, and then one of our last indicators will be examining somewhat EQAO data, but unfortunately, that data links to only three specific grade years, so it leaves out a lot of the other students that we need to be addressing.
Justicee Benda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you tell me the role of the facilitator, please?
Absolutely. So, currently in our elementary schools, we have subject-wide itinerants that would address most likely numeracy and literacy initiatives. The facilitator will be a dedicated numeracy itinerant that will work with the leads that must be identified, based on the ministry new funding of each school, in order to support their work around their problem of practice in regards to numeracy in this school.
And will that person be in place for September?
They will be, yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your fabulous presentation. Thank you for taking the time out of your night. Moving on to delegations, 5.1, the Uniform Bender, the parents' perspective, Maria Lorenko. Maria Lorenko.
Thank you for listening to my delegation. I know this policy has been recently discussed and amended. I'm here because you haven't had all the information, and some of what you've heard is wrong. This policy affects parents directly and significantly. We should have had a voice in this process, so I reached out to as many parents as I could. I received responses from parents across the region, as you can see on the current slide. Throughout the PowerPoint, the comments in quotation marks are those that came from other parents. They're not my comments. In October 2014, I raised this issue at an election debate for Burlington trustees. All that were ultimately elected responded that they would support a change if that's what parents wanted. Well, I'm here to tell you that parents want change, and I hope you will uphold your election promises. My purpose in delegating is to convince you to reconsider the sole supplier provision in the policy. Let the McCarthy's contract expire and make crests available so that parents can shop where it suits their needs. Consider a more comprehensive consultation process with parents, or just leave it open. I'll be asking questions throughout my presentation. They're summarized in your package at the end of my report. A common complaint is that the vendor has a monopoly, which has well-known disadvantages. An artificial monopoly, one created in an otherwise free market, has unique costs. There's an RFP process and contract negotiations. The monopoly must be enforced. Principals police what the students are wearing, creating stress for students and parents alike. Aren't there more important issues than where I bought my son's pants? Having to qualify for monopoly should create incentives. Instead, parents are bound to the contract without representation while McCarthy's is insulated. For example, in 2013, several schools voted in the uniform and were promised a twenty percent launch year discount to June 2014. When McCarthy's tried to end it in May, neither trustees at the time nor staff asked them to honor their commitment. It was left up to McCarthy's as to whether or not to extend the discount. It's not an extension if that was the original commitment. Nobody stood up to McCarthy's, and nobody stood up for parents. The contract terms require adequate inventory to be maintained at all times. McCarthy's is routinely backordered with many other issues, including poor service reported by parents. The contract contains a termination clause. It can be canceled if the vendor does not meet the terms or service is unsatisfactory. Why hasn't this contract been canceled? In April 2013, when my son's school voted to implement the uniform, parents already had concerns about McCarthy's. We were assured that the uniform supplier was reviewed and could be replaced every three years. The next RFP was scheduled for December 2014. A two-year extension clause was then executed in July 2013. This was not shared with parents. The contract has been extended but never canceled. Opportunity for parental input is limited and ineffectual. While three CPIC members do take part in the RFP process, the wider community is not consulted. Uniform committees have not been established at the school level as required. At one time, the uniform policy was amended in response to parent feedback to reflect three suppliers, but before this was ever implemented, the board changed it back to a sole supplier for unspecified financial and procedural reasons. The next several slides are a collection of comments received from parents juxtaposed against claims found on McCarthy's website. Please read through them as they really tell the story of the parents' and students' experience, and I'm going to have to race through them in the interest of time. There are complaints about the store's such as location and hours, a lot of backordering issues, as well as the overall shopping process, an inadequate selection of sizing, and it's inconsistent. Alterations are often required. Parents don't know about the free customization, and McCarthy's doesn't offer it to them. Online shopping policies are uncompetitive, all of which leads to a number of hidden costs. There's a lack of choice in terms of fabric styles and fit. Prices are high, and unlike other stores, there aren't really sales. Children complain they're uncomfortable, and there's no real options to accommodate seasonal changes. The uniform is not aesthetically pleasing. Boys and girls are dressed the same, and styles are outdated. Lots of complaints regarding quality, ripped knees, clothing falling apart in the first wash, and very cheap quality zippers. The return policy is restrictive. They should actually be eager to take back new product to boost their inventory. McCarthy's is not responsive to customers' issues and concerns. How do they keep meeting the RFP criteria, which include affordability, accessibility, and convenience, and quality? In recent discussions, concerns about a sole supplier have often been addressed with reference to McCarthy's, as though the two were interchangeable. How open has the board really been to other suppliers? Have other companies stopped submitting bids because they don't stand a chance? Are decisions being influenced by royalties of over a hundred thousand dollars a year? I understand not wanting to forego thus revenue, but please recognize that this is coming at an expense to parents much greater than a hundred thousand dollars a year. Corporate donations are great, but not when they result from taking advantage of parents. Royalties are reflected in higher pricing for secondary students, and while not paid on elementary purchases, adult-sized shirts, for example, have been the same price for all schools. It would be one thing if shopping at McCarthy's was optional, but forcing parents to shop there and then collecting back a portion of the sales, that's a different story. Social justice, including fair labor practices, is often cited as a compelling reason to remain with McCarthy's. Other Catholic boards have similar requirements and authorize different vendors. Many allow parents to make the final choice. How is McCarthy's the only vendor that meets Halton Catholics' criteria? And with clothing manufactured in China and India, how can we here in Burlington, Ontario, be certain that McCarthy's claims are valid? Parents have raised other industry concerns, such as the unregulated use of pesticides in cotton manufacturing. These practices could be causing serious harm to our own children right here in Halton who are forced to wear this clothing. While the school board may have a mandate to educate our children on social justice issues, and does a great job doing so, does that mandate extend to parents? What about the board's own non-apparel purchases, or clothing worn by staff or students in non-uniformed schools? There are many issues, and it's complicated. Every family should be able to establish their own priorities in deciding how and where to spend their own money and valuable time. And then there's the uniform assistance program. McCarthy's eliminates the financial hardship of uniforms by providing them free to those who can't afford them. Never mind that the hardship only exists because McCarthy's is overpriced, a problem that wouldn't need solving if it wasn't created in the first place. Never mind that these subsidies are funded by everyone else paying higher prices, while McCarthy's gets the credit for being philanthropic. And what about families who feel the pinch but not enough to qualify for special assistance? Who is taking care of the often overlooked middle? At the April nineteenth board meeting, it was suggested that without McCarthy's, low-income families couldn't afford uniforms, as it would be an extra cost to them regardless of supplier options. This contradicts the cost savings that are promoted as a benefit of uniforms. So, which is it? Do uniforms save money or cause a financial burden? The answer depends on the supplier. Low-income families have said they would do just fine if they could just shop within their budgets. It was an ironic discussion, given that two weeks prior, you heard from a delegate who spoke of sending her children to school in generic uniform clothing because she had a limited supply of McCarthy's brand. It seemed to be commonplace in her low-income neighborhood school. How does this happen if these families are getting free uniforms? The answer is, the program's not working as described. Parents are getting a pair of pants, a sweater, and maybe a shirt, and maybe a sweater per child per school year for free. Some principals supplement this with donated used uniforms, hopefully in the right sizes. Why isn't it all coming from McCarthy's? One mom told me that she felt the principal doubted her need despite being in a pretty obvious situation. So, she stopped asking, no one's offering, and she's not getting any more help. One offer per child is not enough, especially as they grow. So, these parents are struggling to provide the rest, along with whatever other struggles they are facing. As one mom said, "I need to worry more about feeding us." Besides the humbling effect of asking for charity and feeling marginalized, these parents talked about doing extra laundry and taking unpaid time off work to come to the school to receive assistance. They're scouring used uniform sales and shopping at thrift stores on sale days and with coupons unless, even searching out McCarthy-branded items. They're struggling and going out of their way to be in compliance with a policy that is restrictive in order to ease their hardship. The board speaks of the importance of social justice in the uniform policy. How about social justice and a sense of dignity for those in our own communities? In closing, I'd like to read you a short email that I received from a parent. These are her words, raw and unedited. "I've been really upset by the board's head-in-the-sand attitude to impact of uniforms on low-income families. At the school level, it seems to be much better. I've been really hoping to have an opportunity to share with the board on the uniforms. The hard part is keeping up with the inner workings of the board." The short version is, my understanding was that McCarthy's would provide one sweater, one shirt, and one pair of pants per student in need per school year, hardly enough to outfit a child, and particularly burdensome if you don't have laundry in your home. I've received uniform support quietly through the school, where the school secretary has let me pick out what my kids need from what's donated to the used uniform sale. I don't know if this is how they're supposed to do it according to policy. You're limited to what sizes people have donated, though. Mostly, I shop at the used uniform sale or buy plain navy-and-white clothes at thrift stores. There is dignity and pride in being able to provide clothing for my children. Even if they have patch knees, it builds my self-esteem to say, "I provided for my child." And I choose that over charity because I want my kids to know, and other kids to know, that they are equal regardless of what they wear. Their dignity is inherent to their person, and financial inequality is very real and nothing to be ashamed of. Sending my kids a non-uniform navy-and-white is my small act of defiance to say, "Look, this policy doesn't work. It doesn't make sense, and it goes against my Catholic values." The principal is really good and very kind about offering support and asking if there's anything we need. The teachers are too, because they know the kids. They see every day who has and who has not by what's in lunch bags, who got a new backpack for September, et cetera. And the other students see it too. So, I think the board is foolish to think that uniforms are the great equalizer. Really, uniforms just say, "We're going to pretend inequality isn't there," or worse, that clothes can fix inequality. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Maria. Are there any questions for clarification purposes? Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for that presentation. I really appreciate it. That was the amendment I had brought forward. I'm wondering what you are asking of the board today to do following on your presentation.
Excuse me. It's all listed right here on the page, Trustee Quinn. Delegation questions.
Is she not allowed to answer my follow-up?
Well, it's not really for clarification.
I wanted her to clarify what she was asking of the board today.
Are you asking these questions here?
Yes, I am. I guess they're not on the slide, so I don't know if everyone has looked at them. I mean, basically, it's what's on that slide there is to amend the policy to remove the sole supplier provision, provide crests, let the contract expire, let parents shop, you know, where it suits them. And if the board desires, have a wider community consultation and to decide, you know, going forward.
Thank you very much. Trustee Intimasi.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I have two quick questions for clarification.
Sure.
Thank you, Maria. Because I know it takes a lot of time to put this together.
It did.
Do you have an idea of exactly how many numbers of parents you had on here? Because then you've got parents from all the different schools.
Yes.
But, you know, do you know your total number of parents that you talked to?
That reply to me?
Yeah.
I stopped keeping count. It was probably somewhere between thirty and forty.
Okay.
But understand that, of course, I don't have access to email everybody in the Halton Catholic District School Board.
Right.
Right? It's basically my personal contacts that I've amassed by volunteering over the years and so on, so.
Okay. And number two is?
Yes.
Because you, in your written dialogue here, you referenced CPIC, and I'm just wondering whether you spoke to any member of the CPIC committee before you put this together or to get any of their input.
No, I did not. But I have spent seven years on parent council at two different schools, so I drew from that experience as well.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you. You're welcome.
Trustee Danko.
Thank you. Are you referring to the policy as applies to secondary schools or only elementary schools?
When I started out, I was thinking more about the elementary schools. I was surprised at the comments that I received from high school parents. They have very much the same issues with kids outgrowing and the styling and so on. So, I would say that parents would like to see it across.
If there are no further questions, I'd like to thank you again for your time and for coming out.
Thank you.
Attached at six point one are the regular board meeting minutes of May seventeenth. They have a mover to approve those minutes. Trustee Rabenda, seconder. Trustee Quinn, all in favor? Thank you. Attached at seven point one is a summary of outstanding items from previous meetings for your information. And moving on to action items, eight point one, board response to the delegation. The board may, one, make a decision on the presentation at this meeting; two, refer the matter to a future meeting; three, request a staff report on the matter to be considered at a future meeting; four, receive as information. Trustee Quinn?
I'd like to propose a motion that we send the report to staff for a report from staff based on the information provided by the delegate.
Do I have a seconder? Trustee Traits, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Pardon me?
In favor.
Jackson?
In favor.
Sorry, I was going to call your name. Trustee Traits?
In favor.
Trustee Rabenda?
Paul.
Trustee Marai? Trustee Intimasi? Trustee Danko? Chloe? Trustee Rowe? Manuela? And Trustee Quinn?
In favor. Thank you.
That's so moved. Thank you. Moving on to action item eight point two, Burlington Rural and Alton Community School Boundary Review. Superintendent Corbaccio, Nar, and McMahon.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'll just take the lead on this one. As you may recall at the last, as you may recall at the last board meeting, we brought forth a staff report discussing some of the changes we're looking to do, mostly administrative in nature in the Burlington Rural, as well as some of the new development areas that are happening within and around the Saint Anne's Catholic Elementary School. So, tonight's just an action report to essentially establish the school boundary review committee that will be having their inaugural meeting more than likely in September, where we'll bring forth to them some options as to what we're looking to do. And we're looking to have essentially the entire thing wrapped up by the end of November so that we can implement these changes for 2016. As you may recall, some of the rural students that we're looking to move, we're going to make sure that they're part of the committee because the changes we're proposing most relate to them, based on some of the comments we received in terms of wanting to do cross-boundaries to other schools that are more nearby. As for the development areas, no one has moved in yet, so it'll be representatives from the school that may be recipients. Any questions? Let me know.
Trustee Intimasi? Yes? Seconder? Trustee Rabenda, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Manuela? Trustee Rowe? Chloe? Trustee Danko? Trustee Intimasi? Trustee Marai? Trustee Rabenda? Trustee Traits? Jackson? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
So moved. Thank you. Eight point three, secondary French resource selection. Superintendent Porcasen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The purpose of this report is to recommend the purchase of an anchor resource for the grade nine academic level and grade nine applied-level core French courses, FSF-1D and FSF-1P. The resource purchased for FSF-1P may also support open-level French, a new course which may be offered in the future. The resources selected are the Chupar and Ompar programs distributed by RK Publishing. We had some questions last time about the digital licensing, and in negotiation with the publisher, we're able to extend the digital license to seven years with the option to upgrade should the digital platform change. Naturally, students would also have access to print material at school in order to support differentiated learning. The recommendation of the selection committee is to purchase Chupar to support FSF-1D and Ompar to support FSF-1P courses. Thank you.
Trustee Danko? Yes? Thank you. Trustee Rowe, seconding? Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote, please. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Jackson? Trustee Traits? Trustee Rabenda? Trustee Marai? Trustee Intimasi? Trustee Danko? Chloe? Trustee Rowe? Manuela? And Trustee Quinn?
In favor. Thank you.
That's so moved. Thank you. Moving on to action item eight point two, Burlington Rural and Alton Community School Boundary Review. Superintendent Corbaccio, Nar, and McMahon.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'll just take the lead on this one. As you may recall at the last, as you may recall at the last board meeting, we brought forth a staff report discussing some of the changes we're looking to do, mostly administrative in nature in the Burlington Rural, as well as some of the new development areas that are happening within and around the Saint Anne's Catholic Elementary School. So, tonight's just an action report to essentially establish the school boundary review committee that will be having their inaugural meeting more than likely in September, where we'll bring forth to them some options as to what we're looking to do. And we're looking to have essentially the entire thing wrapped up by the end of November
Trustee Mariah? Trustee Intomasi? Trustee Danko? Chloe? Trustee Rowe? Manuela? Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Thank you. Moving on to eight point four, appointment of CAC member, alternative representative for voice for hearing impaired children, Superintendent Dr. Brown. Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Trustee Intomasi? All right, Dr. Brown.
I'll just bring to the board's attention, the report is to recommend the new member of our special education advisory committee representing voice for children with deaf and hard of hearing. An alternate member is somebody who can attend meetings to make sure that there's representation for all of our communities. We at CAC do recognize all members and we welcome the addition of Rick Barrero to CAC. And we accepted the nomination at CAC for Rick Barrero to join our committee, so we've asked, CAC is asking the following recommendation to be considered to the Board of Trustees for consideration, that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the nomination, the recommendation of CAC, and appoint Rick Barrero as an alternate representative for voice for hearing impaired children effective June sixteenth until November twenty eighteen.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair. To Dr. Brown, I'm not familiar with voice. Can you just tell me a bit about that association or the organization?
Absolutely. So the voice is representative, sorry, through the chair, the voice is representative of deaf and hard of hearing children. So we have many in our board. We have itinerant teachers that service them and they are the voice for parents. So a lot of our staff are working with students around braille, around cochlear implants, around sign language, helping our students that have difficulty accessing curriculum as a result of hearing impairment to access curriculum in that way. And voice is the community representation that supports students with those physical disabilities.
Anything further? No, we can call the vote then. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Jackson? Trustee Traits? Trustee Rabenda? Trustee Mariah? Trustee Intomasi? Trustee Danko? Chloe? Trustee Rowe? Manuela? And Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Thank you. So moved. Moving on to the staff reports. Nine point one, two thousand sixteen seventeen budget estimate draft. Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Roxanne is going to provide a presentation on this report and then we can answer questions either during or after the presentation.
Through you, Madam Chair. We prepared a short presentation just to summarize the detailed report for the first draft of the budget for two thousand sixteen seventeen and made references to the actual board report just so that we are able to go back and forth as needed. First, I would like to take you through a quick overview of the budget process to date as well as go through our current financial position, an update to revenues, expenses, and the overall conclusion on where we stand and what are some of the next steps. So in terms of the overall budget process, it is outlined in the beginning of the report, pages two to four. It talks about the prior board reports and updates that have been presented to date. The budget estimates process starts with the ministry consultation for education funding, which occurs during October and November of every year, and our board is in attendance every year. This particular session, we had a director, the superintendent of business services, the superintendent of special education, student success, and curriculum services in attendance. A trustee and senior staff budget strategy session was held at the special board meeting of March tenth where we discussed budget challenges. We've also identified potential cost savings and revenue generating initiatives. And we also provided the April fifth regular board meeting, an update on the GSN funding, which was released by the ministry on March twenty fourth, and provided the overall projections, the GSN revenue projections for our board based on the enrollment projections submitted in November two thousand and fifteen. A few weeks later, the actual education finance information system forms were released and additional budget updates were provided to the board on April fifth, May third, and May seventeen regular board meetings, providing updates more in terms of the cost, so the salary budget, the benefit budget, the departmental and school budgets and so forth. Once we've had the opportunity to complete the EFS forms, the ministry forms, based on the enrollment projections and based on any additions in terms of expenditures to match growth and to take into account the opening of a new school in North Oakville, the overall current financial position is a in-year deficit of two million dollars. There are a couple of other restricted amounts by the board for committed capital projects and sinking interest fund earned, which are for three hundred and forty-one thousand, and that makes a total accumulative surplus deficit, a total accumulative deficit available for compliance of close to two point four million expected for next year. Our overall compliance with the ministry, as you'll recall, is one percent of our provincial allocation. For two thousand sixteen and seventeen, our provincial allocation is three hundred and twenty-seven million, so three point two seven million deficit will still represent a compliant budget. In terms of revenues, which are set up in pages four and five of the board report and appendices, A one would show all of our revenues, A nine would show the other provincial revenues, and appendix F, which I believe shows the projections, compares to the ministry projections that were released in the GSN in March twenty fourth. The operating revenue overall increased by eleven point six million over the submitted two thousand fifteen sixteen revised estimates. And just so that trustees would recall, we have submitted the two thousand fifteen sixteen revised estimates in December. However, at the time, the ministry required us to include the labor negotiation-related costs, the one percent lump sum restoration of the grid movement for any of the agreements that had been centrally ratified as of that time. So we had included three point eight million dollars at that point of cost that did not have a corresponding revenue. Since then, in April of this year, the ministry has revised our revised estimates to include that additional revenue, but also to include the other employee group-related costs that had ratified after that date. So the total revenue is four point four million dollars more than what we have submitted. Taken that into account, so that our updated or ministry updated revised estimates, the revenues have increased, the operating revenues have increased seven point two million over that number, which is a better estimate for our current year than what was submitted. The increase mainly reflects the uptake into the salary benchmarks as negotiated in the memorandum of settlement of two thousand fourteen to seventeen and the grid restoration back to September first. As you'll recall, from two thousand and twelve onwards, the grid restoration was five months through the year, so now it's being restored back to September first. There is a, so the increase of one point two five percent represents that five months through the year increase for the ten-month staff, that is half the year. For the twelve-month staff, that is one point two nine percent overall increase, and that is not actually reflected in the increase in funding. There's been also an increase of nine hundred thousand in special education funding. Mostly, that is a result of this increase in salary benchmarks and the grid restoration as special education is about ninety-six percent staffing-related costs and also to incorporate growth. With the new model, actually, we are starting to level off in terms of the implementation of the new model. We have been gaining over time in this area. However, this year, we've seen that what we lose on the old model, we have gained on the new model. So we're starting to equal in terms of where our special education funding will be, the allocation will actually end up being under the new model. However, growth will still be increasing this allocation. The First Nation Metis and Inuit allocation has also increased over the last year by a hundred and twenty thousand, and it represents the province's investment into raising awareness and the Aboriginal education, and there are funding for a board action plan towards this strategy. The school operation allocation is only slightly higher, so four hundred thousand higher. We're talking about an allocation of thirty-plus million dollars. This also incorporates a reduction of a million dollars in next year for the top-up funding for underutilized schools. So this phase out of the top-up funding over the three years has now led to an annual one million dollar reduction in this allocation, and it is putting quite a bit of strain on our budget and the ability for us to continue to provide the same services as before. Other revenues have increased by one point two million, and mainly they are due to the expansion of international student program. The COOT funding, which is the Council of Directors of Education funding for technology-enabled learning, that represents just over a million dollars, and other user facility revenues that incorporate growth. In addition to operating expenses, the EDC revenue for land also reflects a one million dollar increase over the revised estimates. This chart tries to show the seventy-two school boards and the operating grant per student, their operating allocation per student in the province. Now, you'll notice right at the top is a South Central Catholic French school. They, the ministry has actually made an error in their projections document that is, that they have published and allocated about a third less than the prior year, so that isn't quite where they would be on this chart if that correction took place. They would probably move down in the about twenty thousand per student area down below where the other French school boards are listed. So taking that error into account, Halton Catholic is the lowest funded per pupil board next year in the province. We typically were the second lowest, however, we've made it to the top. Unfortunately. And that is to show you how much we actually are able to stretch the dollar to provide the services that we do, to have the facilities that we do in our school boards. It does put a strain on our budget. There's only so much we can stretch that dollar, but I thought this picture will sort of show the reality of our funding. So expenses, overall, the expenses increased seven point seven million. So if we go back a couple of slides where the overall operating revenue increased seven point two million over the revised estimates, you will see that it's actually five hundred thousand higher, the increase in expenses than the actual increase in revenues. So if last, for revised estimates, with the extra revenue, we are now expected to have one point nine million deficit at the five hundred thousand, and we get the two point four million expected next year. The main increase to the expenses is the salary increase. Most of that is based on the uplift in the salary benchmarks and the grid restoration and some additional, one point six million additional staffing represents growth, mostly teachers to represent the growth of the elementary and secondary panels and some additional staffing for special education and the school administration staffing for the new school in North Oakville. There's seven hundred thousand increase in recoverable wages. It does come with an offset in revenue for that particular area. Now, I wanted to point out that in this budget, from the prior update to the board where we identified the salary budget, and I believe that was on May third, we have taken a two million dollar credit that we applied to recognize the replacement of retiring staff with the less experienced staff, which are placed at the lower salary benchmark. This reduction to salaries also had a reduction in the qualification and expenditure, an experienced grant. So once we placed those staff on the grid as being less experienced, we lost grants. So in order to offset that, we've also included this credit in the salaries. And to the extent that some of the retired staff will be replaced by staff that are just as experienced, when we do the revised estimates and we place them on the grid at the right level, we would get more grants for it, so it will be an offset. The concern is, however, that the sick leave replacement cost overall, we've only slightly increased them by about four hundred thousand, so there isn't a lot of room for, to show the increasing trends we've had in the prior years. We haven't actually mapped out the same increasing trends, and to the extent that that does materialize, our deficit will be a lot higher. So that is a concern because we haven't built a lot in the budget. It's very barebone, and we are praying, for lack of a better word, that a slight increase will show what the behavior will end up being in terms of utilization. The benefit budget is about one point seven million higher than the revised estimates, and it does incorporate a reduction from what we've presented to the board at the last board meeting of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, which is mostly reducing some of the insured benefits for the casual supply staff, which currently, under the new calculation, are now required to be included in the calculation. However, in the past, we have incurred some costs, so originally, we have mapped that same cost trend, not knowing when the transition will be. At this point in time, we have taken that out and we have reduced the expected expenses for workplace safety and insurance, or WSIB, by half a million dollars, which may still The, just recently, actually, we have received an update from our team. They're still auditing, and the ministry and our auditors and teachers pension, I believe. They're still auditing our benefit template that is used to generate this calculation. There have been some modifications, so we have to go back and recalculate the benefits. There may be some adjustments based on the additional information that has just become available actually today, so I would have to go back and determine if these, in the next board report, will be more changes to the benefits. Other expenses, you will know, they're only slightly higher than the revised estimates, and the reason is a lot of the other provincial grants have not yet been announced at this point for the budget estimates, but at the revised estimates, we have a lot more. We never forecast these. We only include in the budget what's announced to date, so that's why you will see a lot of outdoor education, for example, for field trips and things like that. They're not yet incorporated, so they will have a revenue side and an offsetting expense. You know, the net effect will be neutral on the budget, but that is the reason why we currently see them as being almost the same. As you will recall, and it's in appendix D, one of your board reports, there have been some increases in the non-salary, non-benefit or departmental budgets to incorporate some growth, to incorporate some additional... growth, to incorporate some additional textbook purchases and so forth. So that, in total, there is about a million dollars in increase, but that isn't quite reflected when you compare to revised estimates because of these additional EPOs at revised estimates. There have been also, as we stated, the ventures down for the loans we have on the prior schools that we have constructed. The interest payments are reduced, so there's a reduction in the interest payments of five hundred and thirteen thousand, and the amortization expense has actually increased by five hundred and eighty-three thousand, which reflect the amortization on the new school and the addition, the FDK and classroom addition at Holy Rosary Milton. That will also have an, an increase in, in revenue in terms of the deferred capital contributions that will come in to cover for that. Overall, this deficit is not a one-time occurrence. This deficit is a, a sum of all the factors that, the lack of funding, the streamlining of the GSN, the phasing out of the top-up funding, all of those, you know, material increases in our costs or decreases in our funding are leading to a deficit position for the board, and it, it isn't expected to be a one-time or to be resolved by itself unless, you know, the ministry changes the funding for sick leave and also recognizes that the board ha, the boards in, in the province have increased insured benefit costs prior to the move to the trust funds, the provincial trust funds. And let's not forget, we are the lowest funded per pupil in the board, in the province. If we are to make any other reductions, it will not be without direct impact to our services, to our students, to the quality of, of our services and our facilities. We really have stretched the dollar as far as we could. We will continue to work on strategies for student retention, to attract more students, for differentiated programming. We will work on expanding the international student program and, and try to generate additional revenues, placing them strategically for the system, and also to identify additional savings for school closures and consolidations in order to offset the reduction in the top-up funding. And just as a summary, I put on the slide, the already identified projects and the annual savings, starting in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and then five years, the total savings on the bottom is one million per year for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, which will match the reduction in the top-up funding. And if five years later, it would be one point seven million. So those are the potential savings if we were to go ahead with the school closures and consolidation projects. So currently, we are going to do one more review of the ESIS forms. We're going to review our enrollments. We have received some additional registrations, especially at the secondary panel, and some additional international students, and we, we may be making some enrollment projection changes. They will come with staffing, just to show growth. So if we have, for example, twenty additional students, they will require one teacher at a minimum. And once we put all those through, they will be reflected in, in the next budget report on June twenty-first. We also have the opportunity to use the seven hundred and six thousand dollars of our working funds reserved to reduce the deficit for this year. It is a one-time opportunity. Once we've used it, it is gone. And so we will bring a final draft for the board's approval at the, at the June twenty-first meeting, and we will plan to submit to the ministry by the deadline of June thirtieth.
Thank you, Roxanna. Are there any questions? Trustee Marai, then trustee Rowe, then trustee Danko, then trustee Quinn.
Over the past, at least five years, for many years, the board's made it a priority to, to balance the budget, not just to have a compliant budget. And I know you've recognized that in your, in your presentation. And obviously, we're all aware of the constraints that we've been put under because of funding from the Ministry of Education. So I guess I'd just, just to, one other comment, and that is, I don't think anyone thinks that funding for education Ontario is going to continue to increase at the level it has over the last ten years. So saying that, if we're not able to balance the budget today, what effect will this have on our board in ten years? So I'm, I guess my two specific questions are, of all the hirings, the additional hirings were, that have been suggested in this, are they just to meet the bare minimum ratios we're required and, and overall at the, at the board? Or are we going above and beyond? And can the staff bring us more than one option when we vote on the budget so we have a compliant option and a balanced option that trustees can discuss?
Through you, Madam Chair. Our total accumulative surplus currently is about fifteen million. So within a few years, it's not going to be ten. If we would continue to have a deficit but compliant budget, we would drain that. So we wouldn't be able to fund our services, our work. The ministry would probably be a lot faster looking at us than before we deplete that, so within the next few, few years. I do believe that we need to send a letter to the ministry. They do need to recognize the lack of funding for sick leave and benefits. That is one very, very big challenge for our board. So we absolutely have to not, we, we shouldn't be losing sight of that. However, yeah, we do not have ten, ten years to have, continue to have deficits. So we, we do have to have a plan to balance a lot sooner than that.
Just to clarify, and just the second, thank you for that. And the second question was just, can, can staff bring both a compliant and a balanced budget to us so that we can discuss the merits of both?
We can certainly try it, to try to, to cut it as, as much as possible back to a, close to a, a balanced one. There's, it's very difficult to say. You, we would have to come with a lot of studying on what the impact will be to students if we were to do something like that. Two weeks would not be, would not be enough.
Madam Chair, if I may, to answer another part of trustee Marai's question, the budget reflects only staffing increases that are required to meet the enrollment growth. If you look at Appendix D2, there are a number of suggested increases in their, under new initiatives, and none of those are currently included in the budget. We have included program enhancements, we, we call them, which are on the previous Appendix D1. Those are required. So we will be looking at those as well, though, in balancing the budget. And the Director, Roxanna, and I, and Superintendent of HR met today to talk about this very matter. And the only way in the future that we're going to solve this, when eighty-six percent of our budget is salaries and benefits, is to cut staff. So let's be real clear about that. That's the answer. It's not a good one. It will hurt, as Roxanna indicated, but that's what's going to be required, if, if the ministry does not come through with increased funding. We've pointed out to you where the budget, where the budget, budget, the cost pressures are in this budget, and they are an increased sick leave, and they are an increased benefit cost. Even with the trusts, the benefit costs are not funded. They have not been funded properly for a long time in, in the funding formula. So what it's going to take to, to try to answer trustee Marai's question, which is a good question, but it's hard to answer, it's going to take a look at this to try to tighten up some of our expenditures further, perhaps try to increase our revenues based on our, our enrollment forecasts. And Roxanna, Fred, and I met today about that, and we look, we think that there will be, and, and based on numbers we're seeing through Superintendent Pennelli in the secondary panel, we think there will be some more revenues there, but with more revenues come, and, and more enrollment come, the need for more staff, too. So it, it's going to be, we're doing everything we can to balance this right now, but it, it's going to take a combination of a whole bunch of things, including more funding from the Ministry of Education. It's not a great position to be in, at the top of the bottom of the barrel, if you will, Madam Chair. So those are, are my, my comments.
Trustee Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was glad to hear a suggestion of, of a letter, because that's exactly what I was thinking. However, before I mention that, would it be possible, maybe in conjunction with our letter, to have a, an alternative budget presented as well that assumes that sick leave and benefit costs would be fully funded? Because we're a board that likes balanced budgets. We have proven that, and a compliance budget is for local emergencies, not an emergency imposed by the province. Because the sick leave costs and the benefit costs are all directly related to central table negotiations. And the ministry is paying parties involved in central table negotiations for the expenses they incurred. Well, this is incurred centrally, so why should it be imposed on us? And I believe, and I really think the trustees should endorse having the Chair send a letter to the Minister to tell her that, that they're covering the costs for other groups, and we request funding for upfront benefit costs resulting in increased sick leave and, and benefit costs. So that our budget is designed to provide every possible advantage to our students, and it won't be impeded by this administrative expense. And I really, I'm not sure how to proceed on this, but I really believe that we should speak with one voice through the Chair, to the Minister, on this matter.
Madam Chair, if I may, if I may, we did indicate in the presentation, too, that there are significant savings to be had from school closure and consolidations. I understand, I'm not, I'm, I guess this is a good segue to the next report. I won't get ahead of myself. To, and we know that two, the board approved two of the four. I applaud that. The board needs to go further. So if you're going to ask for the ministry to do its part, the board has to do its part.
Trustee Danko.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if my fellow board member, trustee Marai, is wishing to move right now that staff present a compliant op, a balanced option, I will second it. And secondly, if my fellow board member, trustee Rowe, will move now to submit a letter, as he described, to the ministry, I will second it. And then my, my questions. My questions are, well, I think one of them's been answered already, and actually, the other one's been answered already, too. Thanks.
Motion.
So we have two motions on the floor. So we have consensus to write a letter and consensus for the compliant budget, balanced budget. Sorry. I, I thought so. I mean, unanimous. All right, let's, let's just call, let's go with the first one, the balanced budget. Who's in favor of that, the, providing us with a balanced budget?
Question.
Yes.
When are we getting this balanced budget? Is it before the next board meeting? And can that feasibly be done, be done before the next board meeting? Do you have the time?
It will be, we have to present it at the next board meeting to have it.
The, to the compliant and the balanced?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, you may.
There may be some revenue lines with interesting numbers in them that surprisingly bring revenues and expenses into balance. Because it's exactly what we just said, and exactly what trustee Rowe's letter talked about. It will have to be predicated on that. So we, we, we will do our part as senior staff to, as I said, recommend revenue improvements and expenditure reductions. We'll go at it one more time. We've been going at this for a while, and my superintendent colleagues can attest to. We don't like this any more than you do. We're in a bit of a bind here. So that's what I'm saying. We're, do our best, but it may be with the balancing item to come from ministry funding, where there's been a tremendous shortfall heretofore.
So the letter should come before the presentation of a balanced budget option?
They got to happen at the same time, Madam Chair.
I didn't know if you wanted to follow up on this.
Could I just clarify your, your remarks? And they're taken well, that, like, this is a fairly impossible situation that many boards across the province are in, but we, we rely on accurate information. And I guess my only concern with the comments is, there are no, and I'm not saying cuts are good, but there are no cuts we can make at this board to, to save that amount of money, like, with, while being in line with, with what we're mandated, mandated from a provincial level.
Through you, Madam Chair. There are. To have them take effect for September twenty sixteen is, is the concern. So like I said, we'll take it back to senior staff. We'll come up with as much as we can. Maybe they have to be, if the cuts happen, they might have to happen later in sixteen, seventeen, but we'll, we'll, we'll take it back. Right now, this budget, Roxanna mentioned a credit that we took out, where, where this is bare bones, this budget. We've been saying that before. This is it. So we'll, we'll take it back. We'll have to take it back at senior staff and look at it more closely.
Roxanna?
If I may just add to the.
I got you on the list, trustee Quinn.
Um, apologies.
Are you not speaking to that, Roxanna?
I, I, I was. I was just going to suggest for trustees' consideration that maybe submitting a deficit, compliant but deficit budget isn't quite a bad idea. It is bare bones as it is, and we are going to send a message to the ministry that we are stretching the dollar as much as we can. If we keep making cuts that are not sustainable, cuts that will be preventing us to be, to have the scores that we have with our students, at what cost? You may not see it in the first year, but you may that, see it down a few years down the road, that such, certain cuts me, did not make sense. We balance one budget, but at what cost? And maybe the ministry needs to see that they're not funding properly certain items, and that we're not going to be the only board in a deficit position, which is something for consideration.
So we have a consensus for the letter and for the balanced budget option? We don't. Okay, so we have a mover and a seconder, and we're discussing.
Through you, Madam Chair. Trustee Marai, in your motion, were you implying that the, your request would allow senior staff to bring you line items that would show future possible funding? Or were you looking for a balanced budget that showed the actual income and expenditures of a, of a, of a twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget with only the current and, and known income that's coming to our board in that timeframe? coming to our Board in that timeframe?
It's a fair question. I, I think that assumptions have already been made in the budget that has been proposed here. Uh, preferably, I'd keep the, the, the revenue assumptions the same. And we actually see, but really what I'm trying to get at is just another option for us to look at and then we can, I think, delve into the actual details of it with questions from, from Board members.
Questions or comments? Um, Trustee Trites.
Just a point of clarification, when you're talking about sick leaves, um, and benefit costs that haven't been funded from the Ministry, and we understand from Trustee Rowe that they were negotiated at the central table. Just for clarification, is that particular to our Board? All the Boards across the province? Pretty much all the Boards? So we're all in the same boat, right?
Through, through. Sorry, through you, Madam Chair. Yes, um, there, there is a sick leave study which you had a presentation from SBCI, School Boards Quaver Inc., which has Roxanna, some fifty-five Boards, I think, included in it. Um, they've updated their study for the years 2010 to 2015. There is an increase, uh, average, um, absenteeism, uh, that, through, it took a little dip in 2013 and it's back up and that's what those numbers showed. Um, and I saw the presentation again, uh, a few weeks about, a few weeks ago at the Senior Business Officials Conference. Um, so we are all, uh, in that together. It's a question of, uh, whether you have offsetting, other offsetting, uh, areas to, to mitigate that, like, like if you're a growth.
Point of order, Madam Chair. We've strayed off of the, the discussion of the motion on the table.
Okay. Trustee Rabenda, do you have something to say? Right, and we're gonna, I'm gonna call, we're, this motion calls. Okay, so I'm gonna call the vote then.
Could, could we get a clarification? Once again, we know about the letter and then the motion was balanced and compliant?
So we're doing it together? Yes? All right.
I think there are two, I think there are two separate motions.
Yeah, I thought they were two.
That's how it was described.
We're on the first one, we're on the balanced budget right now. Trustee Carabella.
In favor?
Jackson. Trustee Trites. Trustee Rabenda. Trustee Marai. Trustee Intomasi. Trustee Danko. Chloe. Trustee Rowe. Manuela. Trustee Quinn.
In favor.
So moved. All right, so we, yes, Trustee Rowe.
My motion was that the, uh, the Board send a letter?
Yes.
To the Ministry of Education in regards to funding for, uh, sick leave and benefit costs.
Trustee Danko seconded that, so we're on to discussion. I'm sorry, Trustee Rabenda, where did your question come in? Any?
My question is pertaining to, um, a slide that I would like to go back to afterwards. So it's not part of this. So connected, of course.
So is there no discussion on the letter? Trustee Carabella.
So the Ministry knows this is happening, so our letter will just tell them it's really happening. And what is their plan? Like, are they eventually?
There has been, um, nothing really officially stated by the Ministry that they will be providing funding, so it is difficult to say that we could put something in the revenues in expectation that they will. Um, they, we do know that they have requested, uh, the SBCI study. They were looking up to 2013, 14, which doesn't really depict the right picture of, you know, there's a transition in the plan. So of course, um, the, um, utilization is going to fluctuate. But if they look beyond that, there's now two more years beyond that, if, they are being provided with the information, uh, and they have, uh, mentioned in one of their memorandums that they will be, and this is back to 2012 or so, I believe, 13. They have mentioned that there would be a possibility of the, if, if it does, the studies do show that the, they, they are increasing, there's increasing costs for sick leave, they will be looking into funding. But there's nothing more specific than that and there has been nothing since that timeframe. Um, they are, they have been provided with the sick leave study for the participating Boards, which are most of the Boards in the province, and it does show them those two additional years that, you know, originally haven't been, uh, included. Um, I do believe it's beneficial that Boards get together and, uh, send them some, um, letters to, to let them know that this is really happening.
Any other questions or comments about this motion? Trustee Intomasi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just, just, just as a thought, uh, based on what Roxanna is saying, all Boards, um, is, I think perhaps we need two letters, uh, one or, uh, our letter should be forwarded also to Oxta and with a request to them formally to canvass the other Boards in the province so that a, a letter could go out from Oxta to the Ministry on this note.
Can this be part of the same motion then? Just the CC? Yes? Okay, let's call it then. Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Manuela? Trustee Rowe? Chloe? Trustee Danko? Trustee Intomasi? Trustee Marai? Trustee Rabenda? Trustee Trites? Jackson? Trustee Carabella? Perfect. Uh, we have a question on the table from Trustee Rabenda.
Uh, if I could ask Roxanna, would you go back to your second last slide, please? Uh, that one looks good, yes. Um, I'm interested in the last section there where you very kindly put down the amount of money that we are spending on, uh, schools that are underutilized, correct? Uh, I think that we all need to take a serious look at that and think about it because we've gotta make some tough decisions and quite frankly, I'm not gonna vote for anything that cuts student achievement while we're sitting there with facilities that we have to pay for because they're underutilized. I know it's not easy. We failed to do anything about it before, but I think that we will have to look at it again and I, I hope that my colleagues see it the same way. It's not what we want to do, it's what we have to do.
Trustee Quinn? Trustee Intomasi?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, uh, and in response to, to Trustee Rabenda, I didn't see it that way and I don't think there, there is or should be a logical step that budget cuts or closures of schools will necessarily lead to negative student achievement. I think that, that's an easy step to, to allude to, uh, as, as many logical fallacies do, but I don't think it's a necessity that student achievement will necessarily be, be harmed by maintaining schools at our, at our current rate. Uh, and my question through you, Madam Chair, was to perhaps Superintendent McMahon or the Director. We had a good presentation on attendance support programs, uh, that are going on in public and, and other educational sectors, and I'm wondering if we are going to hear from senior staff as to how an investment in additional attendance support programs could lead to budget reductions or cost reductions?
Um, through you, Madam Chair, that remains to be seen. Um, I would probably want Joe to comment on that. Um, that is a possibility. We're gonna, we'd have to, there was a, uh, SBCI, the group that presented, was, was, uh, trying to start a pilot, uh, group to look at that, uh, and start, hopefully, uh, a program where the cost to undertake that would be initially reduced, we would hope, Roxanna, to try to see if it would work. Um, that has not got, um, a, um, whatever, a start, if you will, it started, but it hasn't grown. We hope that's the case. We volunteered to be part of it. Um, so, so that would have to be, uh, going forward in, in 2016, 17. We're not gonna, um, we're not gonna be able to have it in place to say we can realize those savings right now to put in a budget for, for next Board meeting. We're still pursuing that. And the presentation again, that I mentioned a couple of weeks ago at the Senior Business Officials Conference was again to, to, um, try to further that pilot work group, so.
Trustee Rabenda?
Uh, I respect, um, Trustee Quinn's point of view. I will disagree with it. If you stuck, start cutting staff, eventually that will have an impact on education.
Trustee Intomasi, then Danko.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, to Trustee Rabenda's comment, I'm in full agreement because we are not going to be getting the funding to maintain those schools with the empty pupil places, so it's not even so much, I think, I mean, the programming will certainly suffer if you don't have the funds and you have to keep, i- i- if you can't maintain your buildings, how can you have programs that are, that are worthwhile? So when I'm looking at this, I'm thinking, if we are not going to be able to get, I don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but in the event that we don't see consolidation as, as a reality with new schools, and I think we're gonna have to take a hard look also at boundary reviews and start marrying some of, some of these communities together as much as it won't be a popular decision.
Trustee Danko?
Well, Madam Chair, I was only gonna say that it's, it's too bad that that pilot is not proceeding and, um, it's not any single idea that's gonna be a magic bullet here. It's gonna be a mix of several of these things. It could have been one or two consolidations, it could be partial, some attendance management, it could be some of this or that, and maybe a few cuts here and there. So, you know, it's, it's gotta be a, a mix of those things.
Thank you. Are you on for nine point two, Roxanna? No? 2016 capital priorities business cases submission. Superintendent McMahon? No? Frederick?
Well, well, I'll start, Madam Chair. Um, so I would draw trustees' attention to the first paragraph, uh, in the report, uh, which is on page one forty-five in your package. So on May nineteenth, we did receive a letter from the Ministry of Education indicating that, uh, the four, um, modified pupil accommodation reviews, um, were not approved based on the business cases we submitted. Yes, as I mentioned earlier, two of them were not approved by the Board, but as trustees will recall, we had to submit the business cases by the end of February and the Board decision was to be by the end of March. Since we did not meet that timeline, the Ministry declined approval of all four. What they did say, and you can read it in the appendix, Appendix A, is that they, uh, once a decision is made, each proposal may be eligible for funding in future rounds of capital priorities or school consolidation capital. So with the letter we received on May twenty-sixth, um, asking for funding submissions, uh, the two empires, namely, uh, Oakville and Georgetown, that the Board did approve, we've now included as our, um, priority number one and two, uh, on, uh, page, uh, one forty-seven, or three of four of the report. Uh, in, in addition to those, and, and we brought forward a report on this, uh, last Board meeting, Fred, I'm losing track of time, um, but it was last Board meeting, right? On the, the staff report on the priorities? See, I'm losing track of time. Okay. Scratch that. It's June seventh. I'm resisting saying a lot of things right now. That's right. So we've included three other priorities, uh, on the list at the top of, of page one forty-seven in your package, Madam Chair. Uh, those being Milton eight, uh, the, the, and the Boyne Secondary Plan, an elementary school, uh, the third Catholic secondary school in Milton, uh, which is coming on faster than we thought. And then the Oakville Saint Dominics Empire, uh, project, which is a subset of Oakville, our, our Oakville Empire was actually in two parts, as you'll recall. So we put that as number five. That is the, uh, the, the ranking we intend to use in the submission. The submissions due July fifteenth, Fred, and those are the priorities that staff have arrived at. We're here, uh, to, um, to discuss those with you and we will be bringing back an action report at the next Board meeting, um, with those as our priority list, subject to input from the trustees.
Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, looking at Appendix A and the recommendation from, uh, Minister's Office, each one says this proposal was not eligible for school conel, school consolidation capital funding. So, we went through a modified process, rushed the process and, because we were trying to make deadlines. We followed the deadlines prescribed by senior staff. We held the vote according to the calendar and none of them were eligible in the first place. So can you explain to the, the Board here why we went through this process if we were not indeed eligible?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna let Fred answer that one.
Through you, Madam Chair. From the onset when we received the memorandum at the Board, uh, initially the plan that staff was gonna undergo on the, in January was essentially to go forward with this by the end of it. Um, essentially maybe February, initiate these processes. Um, as we had alluded to back in the January nineteenth Board meeting, the modified process was utilized as this would be an opportunity to utilize some of the funds sooner rather than later. And as these were a little bit more simple projects in that, we're not looking at breaking up communities, we're not looking at dividing, we're looking at combining and being more inclusive, we didn't find it necessary to go through the full process. Yes, there was the initiative to try to get these in as soon as we could to be eligible bef, for round two of the SCC funding, again, now, and with that knowledge that there's only four rounds. And we did go in advising the Board of Trustees that the timelines were going to exceed the Ministry March twenty-eighth deadline, but the Ministry had notified Boards, not on paper, verbally, that there would be possibly the intent of looking at anything that came close to this date. Personally speaking, two weeks within that date to get four empires completed and to try to undergo these enhancements in a lot of our aging neighborhoods, I think that was a short timeline, but the Ministry thought otherwise. Nonetheless, there was still the intent that this is not lost work, this is work that we have achieved. We have two processes that were successful. And now we have two viable projects that we can submit on an ongoing basis, both at capital priorities as well as school capital priorities. And again, as Roxanna pointed out, these are savings that are gonna come to the Board in terms of our operational. So I don't think this is lost work. At the end of the day, the Ministry probably had a set amount of funds allocated for round two. They did not anticipate this Board to act quickly and to take advantage of this as we did, and now we're in this situation. So, at this point in time, as we told the community, we did not succeed in the SCC round, but we will attempt again in the capital priorities round. So, I hope that answers the question, but.
Madam Chair, if I may, I understand Trustee Quinn's point and if you read the, the first line on its own, that, that could be an interpretation. You really have to read the whole box in each one. It is, it, they were decline, because they turn around in the last sentence and say, but you'll, they'll be eligible for future submissions. So it meant, it's not properly worded. They were, they were not eligible at this time because they missed the deadline. They will be eligible in the future.
Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that, uh, Superintendent McMahon, but my, my concern was the, the carrot of the, the modified plan was that if we hurried up, then maybe the Ministry would still listen to us. But their first line tells us that they couldn't listen to us according to their own rules and despite verbal, perhaps, get it in while you can, I think it was disingenuous for us to rush it and have all the stakeholders participate in such a rushed motion when it was not necess, a necessity because these were not eligible for funding.
Well, Madam Chair, I would add that it's, it's hard to say without knowing the competitive landscape of all the submissions that were made and where we ranked in those.
Well, through you, Madam Chair, and, and thank you, Trustee Danko, for those comments 'cause I don't know that either. Uh, I would suggest it would be interesting and, you know, which Boards maybe had a Board meeting on, oh, April fifth and might have been approved. I'm just saying, you know? I don't know, but that's the issue. I, I'm with Fred. We tried, we put it forward, we had the opportunity, we could've sat back and done nothing, but we didn't. And we appreciate the Board's support on that. We went forward and what, they were hurried, there's no question about it. There was no way that a full, uh, par process was gonna be accommodated in those timelines, but we tried at least to do the, the hurry up process, if you will. And, uh, my understanding of the, there's an announcement that came out about the funding, Fred, and it's, it's not a lot of schools that were awarded. It's like four new schools and, I, don't quote me on that, you can look it up, but it's enough, it's. it's a no, it's very few new schools and a number of additions, I think, happened as a result of that money. So, we're definitely not a loser, and the money, the, the seven hundred and fifty million that's been attributed to that pool of funding, if you will, lots of it is still there, to my understanding, and so, to Fred's point, uh, the work effort, uh, is not lost. In fact, we've, we've now, you know, if you will, put our foot in the water, and we can continue down that process, uh, down that path, um, where there is sufficient need to look at underutilized space in our schools.
Trustee Trites.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just like to add additionally, when we're all going through our empire processes, like community consult meetings and after, um, finally getting to the April nineteenth board meeting, that we heard this as well. There was a connection made between doing all of this and then finding out by March twenty-ninth, we were gonna be on, we didn't have the board approval for any of this. So, just to add that we heard that out in the community, people had figured that out as well, and it was a very legitimate question.
Madam Chair, I mean, I, if, I, I got lots of time, I can keep talking if you want, um, but we didn't like the order of the memo any more than what Trustee Trites just said. I mean, to, to, let, let, let's just, you know, that we, we, Fred, uh, and his, and, and Sarah's there, they, they put a lot of time and effort into the, those business cases. Uh, you know, we put those in, the board may or may not approve them. To me, you might wanna have got those two the other way around. The Ministry was trying to help usher, help boards usher the work effort, start the work effort, get it done. I don't necessarily agree with their ordering, and I think that's what Trustee Trites is alluding to, so, uh, you certainly, I mean, I, I understand.
No other questions? Thank you, Fred. Moving on to nine point three, strategic planning, two thousand and sixteen to twenty-one. Director Dawson.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, this staff report is to provide trustees with a, uh, update on our strategic planning process. On the, uh, first part of the report, it outlines the six distinct phases that our planning process and the timelines that, uh, have been undertaken. Um, at the beginning in phase two, trustees identified the stakeholder groups that they wish to, um, consult with, as well as the questions that were developed by trustees. And then, uh, we went out in, in the fall with extensive consultation, um, and you can see from the number of people on page three of eight of the report, um, how many people were, uh, consulted in a variety of methods, focus group, town hall, telephone town hall, and online surveys. The appendices also outline the various timelines, uh, previous reports as to, um, what the feedback was, the detailed feedback, and the themes that emerged from our consultation. And, uh, as we entered into our plan development, we had four dates, uh, working with trustees and, uh, senior staff to determine and refine our outcomes and our priority areas, and just last week, we, uh, presented trustees with, uh, the foundational elements, achieving, believing, belonging with, with the various outcome statements. So, this action report is, uh, you will receive an ac, an action report on June twenty-first, where we'll ask trustees to approve the strategic priorities and outcomes. Um, then staff will begin to develop action plans for each outcome, including timelines, measures, and levels of participation for those actions, as well as budgetary implications over the five-year period, because this will be a five-year, uh, strategic plan. And then we will present those very details at the first board meeting in September. Staff will develop a communications plan on how to launch this in our district, and we will share this with trustees in September, and then a detailed plan and schedule outlining the monitoring activity reports related to the plan will provide a framework which we can monitor and measure our progress against clearly identified indicators. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions for trustees at this time.
Thank you very much. No questions? Thank you. Moving on to staff report, nine point four, social studies supplementary resource purchase supporting First Nations, Métis, and Inuit education. Superintendent Precasino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The purpose of the report is to recommend the purchase of a supplementary resource for grades one to three social studies that focuses on First Nations, Métis, and Inuit histories, culture, and perspectives. The resource selected is Turtle Island Voices, which is distributed by peers from Canada, and, uh, the Ontario First Nations, Métis, and Inuit Policy Framework states that all students in Ontario will have knowledge and appreciation of contemporary and traditional First Nations, Métis, and Inuit traditions, cultures, and perspectives. The Turtle Island Voices series offers Indigenous students an opportunity to see themselves reflected in their learning materials. It offers all our students the opportunity to recognize the role and contribution of Indigenous peoples in the life, culture, and heritage of Canada. Furthermore, this resource encourages students to become empathetic and more aware of family, community, and global issues, which aligns with our focus on faith themes of stewardship of creation, human dignity, community, and the common good, as well as solidarity. A recommendation to purchase Turtle Island Voices for grades one to three as the approved supplementary resource will be presented at the June twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen board meeting.
Thank you, Superintendent Precasino. Seeing no questions or comments. Moving on to ten point one, student trustee update.
So, since the school year is winding down, we're, a lot of activities are starting to slow down, kids are moving more towards prepping for summer and exams if you're in high school, so, uh, especially the secondary schools are moving more towards exams and culminating, sort of summatives. Uh, schools had their final school-wide masses last week. We had our last Student Senate meeting on May twenty-fourth, where we said goodbye to our staff advisors, Mr. Wong and Mrs. Castellari, and new staff advisors will be joining the Student Senate team, and next year's student trustees are very excited to work with them. Uh, the ladies and I attended Oxta ECO's AGM from May twenty-sixth to May twenty-ninth. We had the opportunity to net, where we had the opportunity to network with other student trustees from across the province, as well as have discussions with Directors of Education, Board Trustees, and Student Trustee alumni at the gala celebrating the organization's fifteenth anniversary. It was nice to see the familiar faces of Director Dawson and Trustee Roe, who attended the gala, and I was unfortunately unable to be there, and so was Christina, but Manuel was, was elected as the Vice President of the Catholic Board Council for Oxta ECO, so that's a big accomplishment. So, she'll be going to extra meetings every month, just like Chloe did this year, and we wish the best of luck, wish her the best of luck in her role next year. And with that, that is the end of the student trustee update.
Trustee Marai.
Just one question, who are the staff advisors now that are going to be first human resources?
And Ms. Thomas, and Mr. D'Souza's joining the team next year.
Thank you, Jackson. Moving on to ten point two, educational field trips are attached for your information. If anyone has any questions? Seeing none. Ten point three, provincial consolidation of school board financial statements accountants' report with respect to the seven-month period from September one, two thousand and fifteen to March thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a report we do, uh, every year as required by the Ministry of Education. I believe this is the eleventh time, Roxana, that we've had to do this. What it does is basically, um, we, we have to perform in another year, and in addition to the one we do on August thirty-first, uh, one at March thirty-first, um, in order for our, uh, numbers to be consolidated with the Ministry of Education, which are in turn consolidated into the books of account for the province. Um, I will just point out on page two of the report, item six, it says that, uh, the aud, the auditors, our external auditors, KPMG, who did this work, referred to as specified audit procedures, um, noted that there were, they found no exceptions. That's a good news story, um, and I also would like to recognize, uh, the efforts of Jay Chantavong in our finance, financial services area, who's the Acting Manager of Budget and Accounting Services in the absence of, uh, Franka Gibson, who is on, uh, sick leave, uh, right now in our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent McMahon. Uh, ten point four, Solutions Summit Report, two thousand and sixteen. Superintendent O'Hara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of our staff and human resources, Katie Ongaral, who is actually in, uh, the crowd today. Katie, you wanna wave to everyone? Uh, she's our, uh, human resources analyst, and she had the privilege of attending the Solutions Summit Conference in Portland, Oregon, which was held on April the twentieth to twenty-second, and this conference, again, deals with our Smart Plan Express system, so that's our attendance tracking and replacement system, and there is an annual conference where school board administrators have the ability to meet and learn and network, uh, to learn best practices, to update their skills on report generations, et cetera, report generation, et cetera. Uh, so Katie, again, was able to attend that conference. Uh, we also are, are going to be one of the boards to beta test the next generation of this program, uh, so that gives us an opportunity to be on the ground floor to provide feedback on the new capabilities, potential issues, and also product enhancements for the future. So, if there's any questions that any trustees have, Katie or I would be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Trustee Quinn.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm wondering if, uh, Katie, in her, in her outreach to all the other jurisdictions that we're at this conference, is there anyone who's not finding, uh, attendance to be an issue in education sector, or is it a North American?
Everyone that I spoke to.
Have the same.
Thank you, Katie, and thank you, Superintendent O'Hara. Uh, there's no miscellaneous information, there's correspondence, three pieces attached for your information, no open question period, you don't have to go back in camera, there are no absentees. May? Oh.
Do you need to add information items, or is that, uh, from the notices or motion that were introduced? Do you have them? I will send them.
They'll be added. Thank you. Uh, motion to adjourn, please. Trustee Marai, seconded. Trustee Carabella, all in favor. And I shall close with a prayer. If you'd join me in a sign of our faith, please, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all of your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events, and for all our staff members, both the teaching and support members. We ask that you bless them abundantly, and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations, and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Keep us from shortsightedness and pettiness. Help us to make decisions that are for the good of all, and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always, to Christ and the Holy Spirit, forever and ever. Amen.